Check one, two, 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 two. Check one, two, three, four. Two, two. Can you get any more? Check one, two, two. Sound good? It's a little hot. Check one, two. Just get it close and then we can tweak it. Yep, check one, two. Okay, I'm gonna go to the next mic. Okay, this, this is two. Check one, two. Sounds good. Check one, two. Mic three. Two, four. Check one, two. Three, four. Check one, two. Next one. Check one, two. Check one, two, three, four. Check one, two. Check one, two, three, four. Check one, two. You can set up on that desk and there should be an HDMI cable for you. And there should be power too. Check one, two, three, four. Check one, two. Check one, two. Check one, two. Two, two, two. Check one, two.
In any way, or is it literally just the same because it's a microphone?
Well, these two are better. This one's about the same.
You didn't have a third one of those?
No. Check one, two.
...
All right, folks, it's seven o'clock. Good evening, and welcome to democracy. This is the real thing, and we should all be damn proud that we're doing this. My name's John Miller, and I'm the town moderator, and it's good to see you all. Mashpee is one of 260 municipalities across the Commonwealth who benefit from open town meetings. Democracy does not get better than this, as you know. So if you are able, please stand first for the pledge of allegiance. There's a flag over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated, and let's pause for a few moments of silence for a purpose of your choosing. I recognize there are still people outside waiting to get in. The meeting has been advertised, as most of you know, for several months now, starting at seven o'clock at the high school. Most of you that are regulars are accustomed to the fact that there's a line before you get checked in. So in the future, the latecomers, I would encourage you to plan a little earlier, find a parking space, so that we don't delay everybody on the start of a meeting, particularly if it's a meaty warrant. Meanwhile, it's become something of a tradition at these town meetings to hear from one of Mashpee's outstanding students. This time, a change of pace. Our guest tonight is a former Mashpee student. What's also different is this time we'll learn something about one of Mashpee's important nonprofit organizations that I'm sure you're familiar with, which is also a tremendous asset to our community. So for further explanation, I'm happy to introduce Olivia Donahue.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Olivia Donahue. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club of Cape Cod. I went there as a child since, I want to say, six years old, and I now have the honor of working there as the front desk attendant. And a little bit about me, I grew up in Mashpee. I am a graduate of the class of 2022. Mashpee, go Falcons. I'm the eldest of seven children. Five of them are currently enrolled in Mashpee Public Schools, scattered throughout. It looked a little different growing up in Mashpee. I lived over the bridge starting my second grade year because we had to move off Cape. And I still went to Mashpee because that's when they allowed school choice. So I was a school choice kid but living over the bridge, and it looked a little different growing up here because I felt very isolated. I didn't really have time in my routine to go out for clubs, stay after school, especially with as many siblings as I had. So when I found the Boys and Girls Club, it really helped me and my family beyond measure. What is the Boys and Girls Club of Cape Cod? It's a nonprofit youth organization. It serves children six through eighteen all over the Cape, primarily Mashpee, Falmouth, hoping to get some Barnstable. It began in late 1994, and the building was acquired in 1999. Today, it serves, like I said, children six through eight daily throughout the school week. We also do teen nights for their teen program, which is grades seven through twelve for the teen program. We offer leadership groups like Keystone. We offer job skills, CPR certification. And that is all really exciting, but the teens don't really have a space inside our current building. So something really exciting we're working on is the Teen Center Campaign. I don't know if any of you might have heard. We are trying to acquire a space for teens to have right next to the club. From my work within the teen program and being a former teen member myself, I think that population is one of our most important populations, especially that middle school age, which is like 12 to 13. That age is so important, and it's especially important to have a safe space or a third space other than school and home. And the club serves as that for a lot of the teens. And we would love to be able to eventually provide them a bigger space. I believe the club can serve as a crucial place for the teens. I remember struggling as a teen, being lonely, being the oldest, not really. I didn't have like an older sister or an older brother to go and talk to. So a lot of these teens have us, the staff, or their peers. We are currently seeing a mass trend of declining mental health, especially in teens. So having them at the club and having them building these connections with peers and mentors is super important. With our new addition, hopefully, there will be more space for them to be able to explore and be around their peers without having to worry about the younger six and little kids. I'm trying to think of, I think I got it all.
Thanks, Olivia. You should try that sometime, right? One reason I invited Olivia to speak with us tonight is to call your attention, as she alluded to, to the club's ambitious expansion plan currently underway to build a 10,000-square-foot teen center. More than half of the $9 million cost of that has already been raised, and you, the Mashpee voters, have already taken a stake in the project by voting at a previous town meeting to extend a long-term lease of town property to the club for this center. And now, if you're inclined, you can help in a more personal way by contacting the Boys and Girls Club of Cape Cod or checking out their website. So thank you for your attention, and thank you again, Olivia. I wanted to take a few moments to introduce a few new faces that are on the stage tonight that were not here at the last town meeting. On the select board, hold your applause. Say hello to Tracy Wilson and Mike Richardson, seated over here. On the Finance Committee, Dr. Ann Schneider at the end, and Kevin Machado next to her. And we have a new town clerk, as you probably know, for the first time in three decades, Jessica Colpitts, who is around somewhere, probably out front. So she no doubt greeted you when you came. Ah, there she is. So congratulations to all the newcomers, and I should also point out Janelle Austin, who always is my devoted resource should I need legal counsel, which I may, at these town meetings. Couple of housekeeping matters. If you are a Mashpee voter, you have in your possession one of these. It's called a clicker. By now, most of you know how it works, and maybe some of you are newcomers. How many of you here have not been here to use one of these in the past? A fair number. So let's do a little trial run, shall we? Does that appeal to you? All right, so focus your attention, if you would, on the town manager, Rodney Collins, sitting at the end of this table, and in particular, examine his necktie. If you like it and approve, you have 20 seconds to press the yes button when I say to vote, or if you don't like it, you can press the no vote. There are no political consequences to the result of this survey. Ready? Vote now. Now, the other thing you'll see on the monitors, as the vote increments, you'll see the total people that have pushed one or the other button. And then, when 20 seconds is up, you'll see the totals for yes or no. So Rodney? You are approved. Do we need another test, or does everybody kind of get it? All right. If you don't press either button, it means that you've abstained. You don't have to. And you can also change your vote during that 20-second window. Just keep in mind that the last button you press, yes or no, is the one that gets recorded when the 20 seconds have expired. So just as you saw here, each of the articles that we deal with tonight will be numbered on the screen, and whether it's a majority vote or two-thirds, you'll see the count as it happens along with the result, and as well as whether or not it passed. And I'll be announcing that as well. Now, if you wish to speak on any article tonight, there are three microphones. One over there, one in this aisle, and one over there. So if you wish to speak, please move to one of those mics and wait for me to recognize you. I'll ask you to state your name and your complete physical address. I'll recognize you if you are displaying your ticker, your clicker, which means you are a registered voter in Mashpee. Non-voters, who are property owners in Mashpee, are welcome to speak if you like as well. In which case, to be recognized, you must display the blue index card that you either have or will be given when you're in line, that's provided by the town clerk. Municipal department heads may also be called upon from time to time, or consultants working for the town to answer any questions. So any questions at this point about town meeting or its procedures? All right, hearing none. Many of you know that Mashpee does have a deputy moderator. It's this guy right here. His name is Ed Gilday. Stand up, Ed. No need to applaud, but you may. I thank him for being available at each of these town meetings. In Massachusetts, moderators are supposed to name an assistant moderator to take over the meeting should I collapse or something untoward happens that is beyond my control. So thank you for always being diligent in your availability, Ed, on that. Thanks also to Chris Ball and his talented crew from Mashpee TV. This is live tonight, as you may know, for bringing this meeting into people's homes. And kudos to the school staff and the police officers here for meeting our needs and keeping us safe. When you leave tonight, please exit through the main lobby door and make certain your clicker is collected. What is known about each numbered clicker is who it was assigned to in case any follow-up is required. Please note, however, there is no record kept, digital or otherwise, of how anyone actually voted with your clicker. You may have also picked up a survey from the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee on your way in. You can deposit the results, if you filled it out while you're here, in a box that I believe is out in the lobby. And if you haven't filled it out yet and still have one or take one with you, you can fill it out and drop it off anytime at Town Hall. Finally, I call your attention to the partial listing of the rules of town meeting that appear in the last two pages of your blue books. Questions that are asked are expected to be respectful. Discussion is always encouraged. Brevity is a virtue. And try to avoid reiterating what somebody else has already said. And we encourage you to adhere to the four Cs, which I will enforce: be concise, civil, constructive, and courteous. Any departure from that could result in your removal from the hall, so I appreciate your cooperation. All right. Everybody ready? Everybody ready? That's better. Greetings to the town of Barnstable. In the name of the Commonwealth, I am directed to notify and summon the inhabitants of the town who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, October 20th, at 7:00 PM for the following purposes, which include acting on articles contained in the published warrant. And I would welcome a motion from Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Dispense with the reading of the annual town meeting warrants.
I think we can take a, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
I think we can take a voice vote on this. All those in favor of dispensing with the reading of the warrants say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed say no. Those opposed say no. Carries unanimously. Article one, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article one as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article one by a vote of six-zero.
Any discussion on Article one? Seeing or hearing none, let's move to the vote. If you are ready, pick up your clickers and vote now. That article, by the way, required a four-fifths majority, which was established with 303 yeses and 10 nos. 313 people voted, which is probably close to what our total turnout of voters is tonight. We'll confirm that a little later on. Article number two, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I motion, and I move the town vote to approve Article two as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article number two by a vote of six-zero.
Any discussion on Article two? This requires a majority vote. Ready to vote? All those ready to vote, please vote now. So Article two passes 313 to 30. Article number three, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article three as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article number three by a vote of six-zero.
And, Mr. Moderator, the Select Board recommends approval of Article three by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. I'll ask for that in the future. Appreciate it. All right. This requires a majority vote. Any discussion? Seeing none, everybody is ready to vote now. Article three passes 307 to 21. Thank you very much. Article four. I think we all recognize that this is a significant article, and we will try to accommodate all of the reasonable discussion that anybody wants to bring to the table tonight. Again, we ask everybody to be concise and clear in their comments, and not to be repetitive. My debate coach in high school reminded me, once upon a time, I'll never forget him. He said, "If you want to be effective in a debate or any kind of a discussion, it's best to make your point and get to the point and make it clear in two minutes or less. And if you're unable to do that, chances are you might not prevail." So I'll just leave you with that thought. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to authorize the Treasurer, upon the approval of the Select Board, to borrow the sum of $25,900,000 pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes of the town therefore, and to appropriate said sum for purposes of paying the costs of construction of a remote collection, recharge, and treatment facility, and the acquisition of land easements, including all other costs incidental and related thereto, all as described in the article and as recommended by the Capital Improvement Program Committee. That the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow all or portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement with the trust and otherwise a contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof. And that the Select Board is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain land and/or easements necessary or appropriate for the purpose or ought to take in the project, and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly subject to and contingent upon approval by the voters of the town of a ballot question to exclude from the approval by the voters from the invitation to of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on any bonds, notes, or certificates of indebtedness included thereof.
Second. Recommendation of the Select Board.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article four by a vote of five-zero.
And recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article four by a vote of five-zero.
Before anybody asks, if you were reading along in your blue books, you would have noticed some discrepancies between the motion that was made audibly and what is printed. Keep in mind that the blue book is the warrant with articles. Those are not motions. Sometimes they coincide, other than that phrase at the end, as the previous articles did, but not always. So the motion that you read, that you heard, read by Mr. Richardson, is the motion that we'll be acting on tonight.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Thank you. In plain language, Article four seeks to place a standalone, underground, community wastewater system north of Mashpee Wakeby Pond. This will substantially reduce nitrogen and phosphorus from 211 homes from entering the pond, the Mashpee River, and Papaneset Bay. Article four is part of a multi-phase approach to help clean Mashpee Wakeby. It is the first meaningful attempt to reduce phosphorus from entering the pond. It also brings the town closer to meeting required nitrogen load reduction in the Papaneset Bay watershed. This community wastewater system is the right technology for remote areas like this, that are decades away from being connected to the town's central system. This project stands on its own merits. It was very highly rated in a statewide funding competition, with only half the projects receiving support. The town manager will discuss the financial advantages of receiving the state's support. There's been a lot of misinformation about Article four. I've been involved with this project since its inception, and I've attended nearly every open meeting. Here's what I know. From the start, the process for the proposed wastewater system has been transparent. It was discussed with representatives from the Town of Sandwich in open meetings as part of the Papaneset Bay intermunicipal agreement. Maps of the lots being considered for the system have been available since the summer of 2024. The Sewer Commission, Select Board, and Finance Committee each discussed and approved this project in open meetings. The town has held four open informational workshops for the general public. The town manager has made all relevant documentation available. Some argue that Article four conflicts with the 2015 Adaptive Comprehensive Water Management Plan. This plan was designed to be adapted, based on current scientific studies, as well as environmental and regulatory changes. What we've learned and shared in public sessions is this. Since the 2015 plan, which had never considered the ecological needs of our ponds, the quality of Mashpee Wakeby Pond has declined substantially. Phosphorus from septic systems to the north and west of Wakeby, and a limited portion of Mashpee Pond, is the dominant external cause of water quality problems. Stormwater, fertilizer, and internal nutrient cycling are all contributors that require management. Each measure is important. Yet, we know that without reducing phosphorus loads from septic systems, the other measures combined will be inadequate to restore the pond. Rumors have suggested that the town is using legally protected open space for this project. This is simply inaccurate. The town selected this parcel because it is town-owned land, acquired for non-payment of taxes over 20 years ago. The town manager has shared all written legal opinions with the Butters and other residents. The town is legally able to use this land for this project. The town seeks to use a small portion of land, no more than 7.5 acres of a 26-acre lot, to address nutrient pollution in our waters. The remainder of the land will be designated as Article 97 property with conservation restrictions held by a third-party agency, such as the Native Land Conservancy. The area disturbed by construction will be largely restored to edge habitat, supporting native wildlife and species. This is a win-win for the environment. You may have also heard that this project comes at the expense of Aquoit Bay. This is simply not true. The town is actively seeking a site for a system for Aquoit with design funds planned for next May and construction authorization in May 2027. The town's capital improvement plan, a public document, has had these funding plans in place since last year. There is no possible way that a Aquoit Bay project could have been ready for this funding cycle. So the town submitted an SRF application for the Mashpee-Wakeby system to capitalize on 0% funding and forgiveness. The town manager will explain the financial benefits to taxpayers of the town. Voters overwhelmingly approved funding for this project's design last May. Nothing has changed. I understand that people are concerned about the removal of trees. Here's the issue. Any wastewater system will require tree removal. And any future system for Aquoit or Mashpee-Wakeby will be placed near somebody's neighborhood. Otherwise, no additional wastewater treatment and water cleanup will occur anywhere, anytime, in Mashpee. The Mashpee-Wakeby system is nearly entirely underground, and most of the disturbed area will be restored to native habitat. Finally, the town takes any potential impact to wells and nearby waters very seriously. Contrary to what you may have heard, the safety of area wells and other bodies of water is strictly protected by federal and state law and regulations. All designs and monitoring for this project must be approved by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Case law from 2015 set a clear precedent for the DEP as the final decision-making authority for construction in the vicinity of drinking water wells. DEP restrictions are rigid and will be strictly enforced to protect all water resources. DE restrictions are the gold standard. If the town cannot meet the rigid performance standards set by Mass DEP, the town will not get a permit, and the project will not proceed. Period. In summary, Article four will stop nutrients from entering Mashpee-Wakeby Pond. It will give this great pond an opportunity to heal and restore itself to its former state for the benefit of all residents. Moving Article four forward will improve water quality in Mashpee-Wakeby Pond, the Mashpee River, and Papaneset Bay.
Before I recognize Mr. Collins, I do want to mention that I generally give latitude to those presenting articles, whether it's through the board of, through the Select Board, or as a petition article. I'm going to recognize, in that spirit, Mr. Collins and his team now to elaborate on information that would be relevant tonight. After that time, we'll get to those that wish to speak to the audience. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, it has been asserted that by passing Article four, that the town receives a blank check. That is simply not true. The fact is, Article four refers specifically to authorizing the town to borrow the sum of $25,900,000 for the cost of constructing a remote collection recharge and treatment facility. The manner in which the ballot question was framed was determined by bond counsel and general counsel. Secondly, the total cost of this project would be approximately $46 million after principal and interest, on borrowing $25.9 million for 30 years at a 5.0% interest. This would cost the average taxpayer approximately $132 per year, if this project is turned down. This is a 28-cent saving on every dollar. Specifically, with 25% principal forgiveness from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, and 3.3% principal forgiveness from the state through the Mass Clean Water Trust, combined with 0% interest through the state revolving funds or SRF loan, the town is in a position to pay $19 million for this project instead of $46 million. I'm going to repeat that, folks. And this isn't about my tie. $19 million versus $46. That reduces the cost of the average taxpayer by almost a third. It saves the town over $28 million to complete a project that is absolutely necessary to address our water quality on Mashpee-Wakeby. The cost of doing it now is simple. Not only is it cost-effective, but if we lose our place in line with the Commonwealth, there is no assurance that we will be eligible for this money down the road or for any other project. At this juncture, the state waits for our approval, and my deadline with the state is October 31st. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Before we continue, I detected at least three people that neglected, I'm sure by oversight, to turn off their cell phones. So if there's anybody else that has not yet done that, this would be the proper time, and it's much appreciated. Okay. Comment from anybody that has comments?
Mr. Moderator. I'm speaking as the superintendent...
If you could identify yourself and your position or address.
I'm the superintendent for the Mashpee Wastewater Department. My address is at Barnstable.
And we guess you have a name as well.
Jared Meter.
Thank you.
Sorry, this clicker that we tested earlier is no longer working. Oh, there it goes. Let me back it up here real quick. Thank you. I'd just like to take a few minutes just to explain the area prior to everybody voting on the article. I'll keep this short and sweet. This is the area. It's north of Mashpee-Wakeby. It's known as the Pimlico Heights subdivision. Like we said earlier, it's a 26-acre lot. We're proposing to use less than seven acres. The area... The area is built out for possible future expansion. That's why we say seven acres, but the actual leaching field will be less than three acres, and the actual treatment facility will be less than one acre. On there, we, there's some maps that we had outside. We wanted to just clarify that the thick dotted line just below the green area there is the area that we're proposing to be Article 97. This is the whole area that it will be treating. It's approximately 211 or 212 homes, except for one neighborhood that just recently had a, it's in yellow. That's where that neighborhood just recently had roads redone, so it will be part of this Why this area? This area has several benefits. It's gonna, keeping septic system effluents from Mashpee-Wakeby Pond and eliminates major sources controllable phosphorus loads. It also, by moving the system north away from the pond, it allows all the homes that are on the pond to have their septic conveyed up north, in which a lot of the nutrients will be reabsorbed in the ground prior to ever getting to the pond. That's one of the major benefits. And then, future, if we find that we need to reduce more phosphorus, we'll add a phosphorus treatment capability to the system, but we feel moving it alone should be enough. It also reduce approximately 4% of the nitrogen load. It doesn't sound like a lot, but this is a plan that's going to take many years to go, and 4% might not seem like a lot now, but if we had to do 4% 20 years from now, you could be adding millions upon millions of dollars to the project. We just see a good opportunity here to get funding to address nitrogen and phosphorus. That's what makes this project beneficial. Was this consistent with the 2015 plan? Yes, it is. We received a letter from the Cape Cod Commission. I won't go ahead and quote it because I want to keep this short and sweet, but they feel that this is a, an essential part of our plan, and it goes in line with this plan in reducing the total phosphorus load. Other than that, we're ready to answer any questions if anybody has any, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Now time to open the floor to discussion from anybody who would like to discuss something. I'm going to elect to start on my left, and we'll probably go left, right, and center again, so... Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm moderator. My name is Lynn Barb... Is it on?
If you could start over.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Lynn Barbie. I live at 73 Surf Drive. I support clean water and improving the conditions of our ponds. I am interested in this new wastewater system. It is just in the wrong place. Again, I support clean water and our ponds. I swim in Mashpee Pond all summer. This expensive system could be on Red Brook Road on town land, cover twice as many homes, and address the Wacoit crisis. Or perhaps it could have been put on the Pickarol Cove land the Select Board decided not to buy and still address the Wakeby Pond without being in anyone's backyard. Again, I support efforts to improve all our ponds. I voted on the CPC to fund alum on Assumit for the improved boat ramp on Mashpee, and I voted to limit speed limits on Santuit and for the funding for the alum treatment for Wakeby. To oppose Article IV is not to oppose clean water. The whole expensive project of Article IV is fraught with difficulties, most especially taking away open space, cutting down prime forest land, and placing the system in a community's backyard, actually two communities' backyards and drinking wells, without their consent. Finally, this project has too many elements of cart before the horse, so I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have my visual aids with me tonight. Oh, and did I mention I support clean water? I do. Please vote no. Thank you.
By the way, the town clerk, Jessica, tells me that there are 499 registered voters in attendance tonight. Congratulations. Good turnout. Let's go to this microphone next.
Thank you. My name is Colleen Schofield, and I am a resident at 31 Gunter's Lane, and I urge you to vote no for Article IV. I want to be clear that I am for clean water. I grew up on the Cape and spent my childhood swimming in the ponds. I want my children to be able to do the same. However, I cannot support a project that is illegally utilizing protected open space. Having both grown up on the Cape, my husband and I thought a lot about what town we wanted to live in when we were purchasing our home. We were drawn to Mashpee for its history of preserving open space. One of the main reasons we bought our home was because it bordered the open space on Zero Gunter's Lane. Zero Gunter's Lane, where the sewage treatment facility would be located, is the cluster subdivision-dead open space for my neighborhood. The only reason the lot sizes in this neighborhood are allowed to be smaller is because of this open space, and all of these home zoning is contingent upon the open space. Because the land is legally protected open space, the town had to ask the zoning board to modify the special permit associated with this land to be able to build the sewage treatment facility. Per Massachusetts State Zoning Law, Chapter 41, Section 81W, the town cannot legally request to modify the special permit without consent of all lot owners in the subdivision because the cluster subdivision open space parcel is part of the original plan of the subdivision. There are 35 other lot owners who share equal decision-making rights for this land and who did not give their consent. This is confirmed by the town's own legal opinion. The July 28 legal opinion recommended, quote, "The town obtained the approval of the subdivision law owners to file an application to authorize the modification of the special permit," end quote. The town did not do this because they knew the lot owners were largely opposed. This is confirmed in a second independent legal opinion obtained by the neighborhood. The town is knowingly breaking state zoning laws and town bylaws, and they are ignoring the recommendation of their own attorney to move forward with this project at this location. The town shouldn't find or purchase a parcel of land which is legal to use to place this facility, not cluster subdivision-protected open space. They are banking on a small working-class neighborhood not being able to spend $100,000 in legal fees to fight this. They have also said they plan to do this in other neighborhoods. Right now, we are voting to protect our neighborhood, but next time it could be yours. Please vote no for Article IV.
Thank you. Next speaker in the center. I noticed that everybody that's currently standing at the mic does have a clicker, so I know that you are Mashpee voters. Please go ahead.
Hi, Mashpee. My name's Alana Doyle, 148 Sunset Strip. Being fiscally responsible doesn't mean refusing to spend money. It means spending it wisely when it truly matters. Cleaning up Mashpee-Wakeby has become a necessity, not a choice. And like a puzzle, restoring this beautiful body of water will take several key pieces working together. One of those crucial pieces is addressing the wastewater that continues to harm the pond. Where our town's main sewer project can't reach, this cluster system offers a practical and effective solution. Yes, it's a significant investment, but delaying it will only make it more expensive later. Right now, we have the opportunity to act with foresight. We're already approved for a 0% interest loan with more than 25% of the principal forgiven. As a fiscal conservative, I can't help but ask, why wouldn't we seize this opportunity? If these were the terms on our own mortgages, we'd sign on the line without hesitation. I hope you'll join me in supporting Article IV and voting yes. Mashpee-Wakeby has been a part of my life, as it has for so many of us here. I want to see the day when our children can swim safely in those waters again, healthy and thriving. The need is real, the financing is smart. Let's do what's right for our community and for the future of the pond. Please vote yes on Article IV. Thank you.
Next speaker at the microphone on my left in the back.
Good evening. Irene Chekovich, Sunset Strip. For the record, I am 100% in favor of clean water and sewers. However, I'm voting no for many reasons, and with all due respect to Madam Chair, one of them is because of Wacoit Bay, which we are state-mandated to clean up and which has been impaired not for five years or 10, but for 50 years. As we all know, the original Phase 2 would have sewed John's Pond and Assumit Pond to help the Wacoit Bay watershed, but Phase 2 was moved to the east side of Mashpee to help Papaneset Bay, Santuit Pond, and Mashpee-Wakeby Pond. But this past January, good news, according to Mashpee's 20-year nitrogen reduction plan, Wacoit Bay would be next, although I do want to point out, on that plan, it's due, it was due to be voted on in 2026. Now we just found out it's being pushed to 2027, which would be interesting to hear more about at another time. So how did this Mashpee-Wakeby cluster system get to go before Wacoit Bay when it's not listed anywhere on that 20-year plan? This part of Mashpee was not scheduled to be sewed in the 2015 plan. It does not even have a phase number attached to it, and in its own diagnostic study, sewers are not even listed as a final recommendation. I'm sure you've heard the catchy soundbite, "Vote yes or do nothing." But for the sake of accuracy, over the next two and a half years, Phase 1A homes will be connected to the sewer plant. Phase 2 construction will begin connecting over 11,000 additional, 11,000 additional homes, and hopefully we will finalize a plan to start helping Wacoit Bay. Surely, I would call none of these us doing nothing. Then there's the argument that this sewer project will help prolong the Mashpee-Wakeby alum treatment that we all approved in May. But following that logic, shouldn't Assumit Pond have a much higher priority for sewers since it's about to undergo its third alum treatment and not its first? Remember, Papaneset Bay is already being helped by sewer Phases 1, 1A, and 2, and Mashpee-Wakeby Pond will soon be helped by Phase 2 and alum treatment and the one, and a $1 million boat ramp modification to reduce stormwater runoff. So why are we here tonight being asked to approve a fourth sewer project for the east side of Mashpee when zero projects have been approved for the other side? Isn't it time we start focusing on John's Pond, Assumit Pond, and Wacoit Bay, a watershed that has been waiting five decades for cleaner water? In conclusion, I personally will not vote to approve one more dollar of taxpayer debt, let alone tens of millions of dollars, until Mashpee has an approved plan in place to start helping the Wacoit Bay watershed. For me, this is the wrong project at the wrong time for our town as a whole. That's why I'm voting no. Thank you.
By the way, those of you that are standing, as you can see, there are vacant seats if you're inclined, but you're welcome to stand, of course. Ms. Wagon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Mary Wagon. I live at 35 Assumit Road. I'm a longtime advocate for both clean water and open space, and for this reason, I am opposed to this article, and I'm voting no, and I encourage you all to vote no as well. The more I learn about this proposal, the more I'm opposed to it. Even tonight, we were told that this project was a four, worth 4% for taking out the nitrogen from this system. I received documentation from the gentleman that said that, prepared by GHD, that said that percentage was 3.5. So every time I learn and attend something, I learn something of even more concern. Also, the 2015 plan that we have, it's a comprehensive nitrogen management plan, was approved in 2015 by the state, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It has not been modified, and I check weekly, there has not been a notification to DEP to change that plan. And the letter from the Cape Cod Commission regarding the 208 plan has nothing to do with approval. That 2015 plan is, stands as is, and Ms. Irene is correct. It doesn't have this site in it, and it doesn't even have it as a priority site for future phases. I'll continue. My entire list of concerns is too long to review tonight. One of my major concerns is the proximity of the system's leaching fields to the existing drinking water wells that are across town line in Sandwich. Images show that the leaching fields are too close and do not meet the required 100 and 150-foot...
Very little deliberation. I want to correct something and make sure that we're clear on this, because it's referenced that the land was taken due to non-payment of taxes. That's on the developer, the residents. Because I oppose the loss of open space and the process by which these plans were developed without timely community engagement, I cannot support this project. I believe that residents have provided valuable input and feedback, and I hope this process is improved for future projects of this kind as a result. You're welcome. Ultimately, it is possible to disagree about this project without being disagreeable, no matter the outcome, and I sincerely feel that way. I want to thank you for the time.
I recognize the next person at the same microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Arden Russell. I live at 32 Sturgis Lane. Since arriving in Mashpee 36 years ago, my family and I have had a strong connection to Mashpee-Wakeby Pond. I'm fortunate to live in a neighborhood that has a beach access to the pond, and of course, I care deeply about clean water for this pond and all of our water bodies. However, I am opposed to Article 4 to place a sewage treatment facility on protected open space. I do not believe removing land from open space protection is a worthy strategy that we should be pursuing. Protecting clean water and protecting open space should not be in conflict. It's extremely disappointing to me that the town leaders have put me in this position by making this misguided decision to pursue using open space for this project. With thoughtful planning and respect for zoning requirements and previous commitments to its residents, we can pursue solutions that respond to both and avoid permanent loss of irreplaceable natural resources and disruption of ecosystems. Most importantly, this vote could set a very dangerous precedent by giving the Select Board implicit permission to use protected open space for whatever purpose they deem a crisis. Today's crisis is clean water. Tomorrow, it'll be something else, and they'll tell us again, "Oh, well, no other option. Best we could do. Sorry for the broken promises." Meeting our state-mandated water quality goals is going to be very, very expensive for this community. We must be discerning and judicious in where we spend our tax dollars. $28 million for 211 homes, $28 million for getting us only 3.5% closer to our goal is not a good financial decision. A no vote on Article 4 is not a vote against clean water. It is a vote for better planning, for accountability, and respect for the environmental values this town has always stood for. We can achieve both goals. Please vote no on Article 4.
Thank you. Other than the two people currently standing at microphones, is there anybody else that intends to address the audience? Can I see a show of hands? All right. I'm going to remind you that brevity is a blessing. Typically, at Mashpee meetings, both the town meeting and any board meeting or committee meeting, three minutes is generally considered a reasonable allotment of time to make your point and get your message across. Couple of you have gone a little longer than that. I indulge it because the messages have been succinct and competent, but that's not an invitation for everybody to go to extraordinary lengths. So I would encourage everyone, since we have many more articles to get to, to get to your point quickly, especially where we have more speakers apparently ready. Let's go to this microphone in rotation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Collins, 85, Palma Road, Mashpee. I'll be very brief. So my takeaway so far is that I think that everyone here is concerned about clean water and also preserving open space. I heard earlier that the parcel in question is in excess of 28 acres, like 29 acres, and less than 20% of that open space is being dedicated to this facility. So I think that there is preservation of open space. I think that coupled with 0% financing from the state revolving fund, which is not easy to get and has to be applied, and you have to qualify on a per-project basis, coupled with an extraordinary amount of principal forgiveness, almost in excess of 28%. So to correct some of the figures that have been thrown around here tonight, we're really talking about, as Mr. Collins pointed out, no relation, by the way, is that the cost of the town is under $20 million for a $46 million project. So my personal opinion is that this is a win-win. It moves us forward in clean water, and it preserves open space, and I encourage everyone here tonight to vote yes.
Yes, sir, in the middle. It is sir, is it?
Yes, my name is Arthur Brecker. I live on Mashpee-Wakeby. My address is 57 Pickrell Cove Circle in Mashpee. Yesterday, my grandchildren came down and helped me take the dock out. I've been on the Cape, and in that house, my parents started bringing me down in 1948. In 1953, they built the house. I'm in that house. My family's been there for years. The water has degraded. What I'm hearing, I agree with that gentleman, we can't afford not to do this now, and the argument that I'm hearing from a number of the people who were opposed to it, and I feel for them up in Gunter Road and the area there because they are going to be constructing something there, is an argument that I've heard for years, mainly from our old town planner, Mr. Vidal, when people have to do something, they have to weigh the pros and cons. And his argument was, "Not in my backyard." And he used that to me on a number of occasions when I opposed the use of the Pickrell Cove property, that he wanted to do a second set of ball fields that we had on 130 and build the same thing. Well, it passed after two town meetings when he got it back. Nothing's ever been done there. I think that this is the appropriate location and spot because all of the affluence is coming from that area to Mashpee-Wakeby. Yes, I voted for the alum treatment, but it's not a fix. It's not going to solve the problems of Mashpee-Wakeby. We now have cyanobacteria twice a year that you can't go in, you can't swim. Half of the fish when I was a kid there are dead. They're gone. We need to clean up water, no matter what the expense is, no matter where it is in town. I agree with people, Wacoit Bay is just as important as Pompanas Bay, but each project is separate, and it's got to go forward on its own merits.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Kevin Schofield. I'm a direct butter to this project, and my house will look out over this new sewage treatment plant. I believe in clean water, but I cannot support this project.
Excuse me. I just want to inquire if you're a Mashpee voter?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see it. Thank you.
I believe in clean water, but I cannot support this project. When my wife and I moved to Mashpee, a big reason was because of Mashpee's conservation efforts and the large amounts of protected open space. Now, I can't help but feel bullied and lied to by the very town I live in. The proposed site for this facility has been on the town's own protected open space map for the last 40 years, but now the town tells us that doesn't mean anything. In 2009, the town presented the Open Space and Recreation Plan for the town. They specifically cited this property and told us that it was to be transferred to the Conservation Commission. This was signed and accepted by the state, the Select Board, and the Conservation Commission, but the land was never technically protected. When I spoke to the town manager about this, he said, "I can't hold the town accountable for promises or documents that predate the current representatives or employees." There are currently Town of Mashpee Conservation Commission signs posted throughout this lot also, yet the town says this wasn't them, and an employee of the town said to me, "Just because the land is posted as conservation and on our protected open space map doesn't mean it's actually protected." So where does that leave us? We can't trust the town's words. We can't trust the town's documents. We can't trust the town's signs. We can't trust the town's bylaws, which originally protected this land. We can't even trust the map they showed us in the blue book tonight because the leaching field is too close to people's drinking wells, protected drinking wells that are regulated by the state. We can't even trust the town to follow their own lawyer's advice. And I quote, "The town may seek to modify the special permit to expressly allow construction of this facility on the property, albeit with the consent of the subdivision owners." They never got consent. So what are we supposed to trust after this? Their intent? No. Their intent for this land was for it to remain undeveloped and for it to remain in an undisturbed and natural state. There's nothing left I can trust in this town. And today, this is my neighborhood, but the town has stated that they want to do this throughout the town. So soon, you might be in my very position today. It's not a great feeling, and because of this, I can't support this project. Thank you.
In the center, please.
Hi. Diane Phillips. I live on Ashumet Pond on 50 Willow Road. My question is back about, I have a question. It's back to Speaker 1 from the wastewater supervisory position. I am all for phosphorus removal of all of our ponds, living on Ashumet Pond. It is now disgusting. But I believe, and I went to the prior meetings on this particular cluster system so that I would understand it, but I thought I just heard, and so this is where I'm asking the question and expect clarification, when he spoke, the first speaker, he mentioned phosphorus going through the groundwater and then coming out, and if it's not at appropriate levels or appropriate reduction, then they would put in a phosphorus removal piece. Could you please clarify that, that the cluster system does indeed have phosphorus removal planned in it right now? And if I misheard, I'm sorry, but I don't want to be the only one wondering. Thank you.
Mark Drainville with GHD. The proposed subsurface treatment system will have a phosphorus reduction as part of it. It's proposed to be as much as an 80% reduction. Jared might have just mixed things up. So initially, it will have up to an 80% reduction. We will monitor the groundwater thereafter, and if it's determined to be needed, we can add an additional process.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Can you hear me? I'm Janice Mackey. Little nervous. I live on 135 Pimlico Pond Road. Gunter's Lane is basically my backyard. We're on almost three acres of heavily forested land. So I've just been very upset about all this because I know what the ecosystem there looks like, and I'm very concerned about disturbing that, building, putting pollution into the ground. We already have so many issues from the base. There's like decades of pollution. We have a private well, and I'm very close to this projected project, so we're just very concerned. You know, there's amazing animals there. I see eagles sometimes even, different turtles that are threatened. Of course, I care about the water, but I mean, we test our well. We've been part of a Cape Cod-wide study even, so I'm very much aware of different contaminants. And unfortunately, there are other contaminants coming for the Mashpee-Wakeby Pond, not just, I guess, from our neighborhood. I'm also, you know, probably, I would say, at least six or seven acres away from the pond. We're across the street. We're up on a hill. I mean, the waste that you're talking about, they're not getting into our private well. So I feel like I haven't seen enough data, really, to back this all up. You know, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with it, but I haven't seen the science behind it, and I do wish, as some other people have mentioned, that this project could be done possibly somewhere else. But then someone else said, you know, "Not my backyard." I just, you know, happen to live in this area where it's projected, so I know firsthand how it will be very disruptive. And the beauty of the land where we are is that it's so many acres of open space for all the animals, and that's something rare in our state. And I mean, that's the main reason we moved there. So, thank you. That's all. Vote no, please.
Thank you.
Natasha is Talia Landry, 70 Cape Drive, New Thomas, Mississippi. Hi, everybody. My name is Talia Landry, and I did say my blood and my bones come from this place called Mashpee. So as you guys do probably know, we do get our name from this great, very pond that we're talking about cleaning up right now. And it is hard for me to hear people start the conversation of advocating against this article and saying that they care about clean water. As you know, all water is connected, especially in this place that we call Mississippi. And what we are as Mississippi people is our blood and our bones are from this place as Wapinaw people. And now you as residents, it's your responsibility to uphold and be stewards of that place. And that place includes the land, the water, the trees, and all the natural relatives. So doing this very project is going to clean that very place that you all are responsible for to keep clean. And the sickness of that place is the reason why we need to do this project right now. The rapid levels of sickness is rising at an increasing rate that we won't be able to get ahead of if we don't do it right now. The funding opportunities, the financial responsibility that we owe each other, is that we have to do it right now. I don't know if you guys realize, but obviously, this administration that we're under isn't going to be allowing this sort of, these sort of projects to be happening at a rate like this with that financial accommodation. So that's why we have to take this opportunity right now. We have been really having to clean up a lot of the wrong decisions that were made by a lot of different ancestors within this room, and we have the opportunity right now to make the right decision on behalf of this water and all the natural relatives around here. As the resident just said, they said they see the eagles, they see all this natural life. Cleaning up this water is going to allow that natural life to live there because if that water isn't clean, you will see those eagles leave. You will see all those heron leave because the hering in the water will not be there anymore. You know, everybody talked about that they were raised around this, but they can't see it in their backyard, this facility. Well, if you were raised around this pond and this water, you would need to see that in your backyard because you know that you're responsible for cleaning that up. If you can imagine what our ancestors had to feel as they had to give up their resources around them for all of our relatives and everybody, all these neighbors to live here today. That's what we had to sacrifice, and we're living within harmony of that. So this treatment facility and this project is that effort to live in harmony for us to keep moving forward and to keep on being clean, or to put efforts between cleaning this water. So it is our responsibility to vote yes. And we owe this to the water for everything that we have done here, for everything that we've had to sacrifice to live here. Every single house that was built on this land is responsible and owes this to that water because that water had to sacrifice for our houses to be on this land. And that's what we have to remember tonight.
Thank you. If you could conclude your remarks, if you haven't already.
Well, I think everybody got the gist of it, but to live within harmony of all our natural relatives, including ourselves, we are responsible and we need to vote yes tonight for Article 4. Thank you.
Now, we're coming up on about an hour of discussion that we've devoted to this topic. I'm probably not going to be able to indulge everybody that still might want to speak, but I'll allow a couple more, and then we'll decide whether we're going to go ahead with a vote tonight. The next speaker is standing at this microphone. Let me make a point of order clear. If anybody wants to move a motion, you have to come to the microphone, just like anybody else, make your motion, get a second, and then we'll vote on it. You don't just shout out my instructions of what you want me to do. Yes, ma'am?
Mary Adams Olexak on Capstan, I live on Capstan Circle. I'll just make two quick points. One is that everyone who has a Title V septic in their backyard is contributing to this problem. And when they talk about the 2015 plan, that was exclusively a nitrogen mitigation plan. The phosphorus has been slowly developing, but has reached a tipping point. And so the beauty of this project is that it does make progress on nitrogen, but it also begins to make permanent progress on phosphorus. I'll leave it at that, but this is a very compelling plan, and it's what we have to do in all of our backyards, which, by the way, already have water treatment in them. To have a better system, collective system, we have to work together and have collective solutions. To have a better system, collective system, we have to work together and have collective solutions.
Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. Susan Dangle, Katuut Road. I stand before you tonight as I have at many a town meeting since 2020. Having been a founding member and president of Save Mashpee Wakeby Pond Alliance, it's fair to say that I have a good deal of information about what causes toxic cyanobacteria. And I know about its dangers to children and pets. I know this is especially so because I live on the north shore of Wakeby Pond, and my property receives the lion's share of the prevailing southwest winds that carry cyanobacteria particulates and massive scum layers form at my dock. I'm known at APCC as ground zero for cyanobacteria outbreaks on this pond. In the last five years, I have poured everything I have into learning about the causes of cyanobacteria and what is required to restrict phosphorus from feeding it, working and learning with our town leaders and staff, attending or watching select board and sewer commission meetings, joining the Cape Cod Ponds Network, collaborating with HUI, the Green Center, the Falmouth Pond Coalition, Friends of Peters Pond, MasTech, serving as a stakeholder on the Cape Cod Commission's freshwater initiative. I also served as a stakeholder at APC's Boat Ramp Remediation Project and UMass Dartmouth's Diagnostic Pond Study. I've learned a great deal. Tonight, I can say without a doubt that I have never been prouder of the town's leaders and staff. The fact that nearly ten hours of public time has been given to anyone in town to come and ask questions and identify concerns has been an example of the way to build a collaborative project. I believe that this exchange has created a blueprint for a great project to be built while impacting as few people and as few acres of land needed to be disturbed as possible. Half of last year's applicants did not receive SRF funding, but Mashpee Wakeby did. I've been on Wakeby for over forty years, and today, Alana Doyle posted on Facebook with photos of things she misses with Wakeby's poor, water so poor. It made me think and it made me sad, but here's what I missed most as I wrap up. One is seeing the bottom of the pond. After one to two feet, everything's brown. Let's talk about Ryder Conservation Beach, now abandoned. It used to have four to six lifeguards, a full parking lot, onsite caretakers for the beach, children and families at the water or the playground, swimming lessons, sailing lessons, paddleboard lessons, kayak lessons, sandcastles. All of this is gone. It's completely gone. Weeks of swimming are lost to kids that are lucky enough to go to Camp Farley, but they can't get in the water. And most profoundly is having my family not being able to come down here and enjoy the lake that they love because they have dogs who go in the water without, with abandon. So the risks are too great, and they stay home. Since becoming a clean water advocate, I can tell you that I not only have supported every clean water vote we had, I have held signs, made calls, helped with presentation, knocked on doors, and submitted petition articles to help in any way I can. Tonight, Mashpee Wakeby needs you, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you for your time.
We'll hear from two more speakers and then proceed to the vote. Yes, sir?
Dennis Belzerini, one seventy-six Whipplewell Circle. I make a motion. We move this forward for a vote because they, we're not going to, everybody who's far are going to speak, and everybody who gets it's going to speak. We're not going to change anybody's mind on this vote, so we should move forward and vote on it. We've talked about it long enough, and that's all I have to say. I need a second.
Second, Mary Wagan, second.
I'm going, I'm going to decline the opportunity to take a vote on that and allow one more speaker. One more speaker briefly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Andrew Gottlieb, one nineteen Pickle Cove Road. We've listened to a lot of shifting arguments about why this project is a bad idea. Let me briefly address a couple of those. Repeated assertions that the land has legal status that it does not, no matter how often or how loudly stated, does not confer status to that land that it does not have. Land available, is available for this use. Using land for environmental restoration and then restoring that land is very different than putting a Walmart there. The town has followed the right process. It's followed the same process that it used to receive unanimous support from this body to build the treatment plant at the transfer station. Town had the process right then. It has the process right now. If the town cannot meet the environmental standards the state requires, including private well protection, no permit will be issued and the project will not proceed. If the town votes no tonight, state zero percent interest loan and over seven million property tax relief will be rescinded and handed to another grateful town. I know these things with certainty because I worked at DEP, I signed financing documents, and I signed wastewater permits. The town has this process correct, and the process will protect the interests of the butters and the residents. This is not a choice between Mashpee Wakeby and Wacoit Bay. It's a choice to do both or leave the lake behind. Wacoit project is and has been before this project came forward, slated to begin in earnest this next May. Sentencing Mashpee Wakeby to years more of decline diminishes this community, but does nothing to advance Wacoit Bay's project, protection and preservation. Mashpee Wakeby suffers from a combination of nutrients from stormwater, fertilizer, septic waste, and internal nutrient recycling. Restoring the pond to health requires all of these elements to be addressed. That is exactly what the town is doing with this project. The suggestion that Allen Treatment and Stormwater Project at the Boat Ramp are enough and that this project is needless ignores what the UMass report says. It's also the same as getting a triple bypass and continuing to eat three meals a day at McDonald's. You might feel better for a while, but not changing what you eat will make, wipe out any gains from the surgery and will put you right back on the table less likely to survive than last time. Failing to reduce the septic load will reduce the benefit of and render useless the Allen Treatment, and the lake will get sicker again. Tonight, you have a choice, and you have a choice. Tonight is yes or no on this project. So by voting yes, you're listening to the lake. You're listening to what the lake has told us for years now with repeated cyanobacteria blooms. It's telling us it's sick, it needs our help. I plan to vote yes tonight. I want to lay my head on the pillow tonight knowing that when given the choice to make things better or allow them to get worse, I chose better. You should too.
I think we've heard a pretty well-rounded presentation and discussion of the pros and cons and different opinions on this article. So I'm assuming we're all ready to vote. Is that correct? All right, this is on Article Number Four. It does require a two-thirds vote, and you may vote now. The article passes three sixty-five to ninety-three at eight twenty-five PM.
Mr. Moderator. Right here.
Yes?
Mr. Moderator, I give notice of my intent to raise at a future time reconsideration of Article Four.
Noted. Moving on to Article-
Mister Moderator. I too am giving my notice of my intent to make a motion for reconsideration of Article Four at a future time.
Noted. Moving on to Article Five, Ms. Wyman Columbo.
Sorry. I, thank you, Mister Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Five as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Select Board.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of five to zero.
And Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of five, zero.
Any discussion on Article Five? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority vote, and you may vote now. And Article Five passes three twenty-nine to eighteen. Point of order? Articles, Article Five, yes. Point of order?
Yes. Mister Moderator, could you explain to the audience the impact of a recall vote on Article Four at a later time in this meeting for all those people that are leaving right now?
What is, by recall vote, you mean reconsideration?
Correct.
Okay. Our rules, which you will find on this topic in the back of your blue book, require anybody that might wish to make a motion to reconsider an article that's just been acted on to do so within thirty minutes of when that vote was taken. That doesn't necessarily mean they have to actually make the motion during that thirty-minute period. So at my discretion, I will determine after a short while when we will take up any motions that someone wants to make on reconsideration. That help? Moving on to Article Six. Moving on to Article Six. Mister Whedon.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto. The Select Board recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of five, zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of six, zero.
This requires a two-thirds vote too. Any discussion on Article Six? On Article Six?
Yes, the Planning Board report.
Of course.
Thank you, sir.
Be my guest.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Mary Wagan, Chair of the Planning Board, after holding a public hearing on September third, 2025, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of Art, of warrant Article Six unanimously.
Thank you. Any discussion now on Article Six? In the back.
Smith, thirty-three Sturgis Lane. I have some questions.
What was the name?
Linda Smith.
Thank you.
When, I don't understand some of this, and I don't understand the treatment, especially for single-family or two-family homes. You're actually, it seems that you're asking single-family homes to reduce runoff of sixty percent of phosphorus in their yards. I don't understand how that treatment actually works, or I don't even know if it exists. So could someone explain that to me? Am I on the wrong article?
The, the question is whether someone can explain the question or the answer.
Yes.
Apparently, yes.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. Can you hear me? Great. If I understand correctly-
Your, your name and address, please.
Certainly. Brian Tovin, and I'm the town planner. You can find me at Town Hall.
Thank you.
If I understand correctly, the question is whether or not this article will have any impact on single-family homes and have any requirements regarding a reduction on phosphorus, and the answer to that question is no. This is just about cluster subdivisions and multifamilies that are subject to a special permit and wish to add additional land to the special permit.
Am I on the right warrant? Because under two, it says for new or redeveloped single or two-family residences or new non-residential development. Am I on the wrong article?
We're on Article Six.
I'm on Article Eight? All right, answer that one. Comes Article Eight.
All set?
Any further discussion on Article Six? This requires a two-thirds vote, and you may vote now. Article Six passes three thirty-three to forty-four. Article Seven, Mister Cotton.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto. Select Board recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of five to one.
And Planning Board.
Hello, thank you. After holding a public hearing on September third, 2025, this is Mary Wagan. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend town meeting approve Article Seven.
Any discussion on Article Seven? Hearing none, this requires a two-thirds vote, and you may vote now. And Article Seven passes three twenty-two to twenty-nine. Article Number Eight, Ms. Wilson.
I move the town vote to approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto. The Select Board recommends approval of Article Eight by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six, uh, Article Eight by a vote of three to one.
And, excuse me, Planning Board. Or you can try another mic.
So after a, a public hearing on September third, 2025, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval by town meeting of Article Eight.
Any discussion on Article Eight? It just made it.
Okay, I'm back to the phosphorus removal for single-family homes. Right now, as I see it, we don't have, the only thing that takes out phosphorus is, is the cluster system and other cluster systems around. I don't know how a single-family home, if I'm reading this article correctly, should be responsible for removing sixty percent of phosphorus from their, if it's a redevelopment of their home. Am I reading this wrong? She's reading this one.
You sure you're on Article Eight?
Am I not on the same right? I'm on Article Eight.
Any further discussion on Article Eight? Discussion on Article Eight. Hearing none, let's move ahead and vote now. Two-thirds vote required. And Article Eight passes three forty-six to thirty-one. Article Number Nine, Mister Richardson.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Nine as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto. The Select Board recommends approval of Article Nine by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends the approval of Article Nine by a vote of four, zero.
And Planning Board.
Okay, I took your suggestion, Mister- Okay, I took your suggestion, Mister Moderator. Thank you very much. Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board, after holding a public hearing on September third, 2025, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend that town meeting approve Article Nine.
Is there any discussion on Article Nine? Maybe this time.
Linda Smith, thirty-three Sturgis Lane, Mashpee.
Welcome.
Anyways, I would like some explanation on how they expect single-family homeowners or two-family homeowners to remove sixty percent phosphorus from treatment plants, from treatment on their own property. I, I'm confused, what, what treatment is, exists? Even IAS systems don't remove phosphorus. What treatment exists that you can ask a, a, a single-family homeowner to do that? This is if you, even if you redeveloping your house, if you add something on, you now all have to do that. And this is, this is just not fair. And I, listen, I am huge on stormwater. I am huge on stormwater. But, but sometimes you have to be practical when you actually pass these things and realize, what does this actually do? Is, is it just verbatim or is it, you know, what, what is this going to do?
So is there an answer to the question from anyone?
So I'm going to call upon our DPW Director, Ms. Catherine Laurent. This article is passing through the Planning Board and the Planning Department by a state statute because it's a part of our zoning bylaws. However, it was initiated by the Department of Public Works in order to be compliant with a federal permit.
Ms. Laurent.
Catherine Laurent, DPW Director. So the expectation is this has to do with new development and redevelopment, that you are making sure that you're not increasing from a undeveloped state, the, the impacts of stormwater from your impervious surfaces. So your roof runoff, your driveway runoff, you are required to do through bio-retention, rain gardens, et cetera, so that you have some treat, pre-treatment of that stormwater before it enters into the groundwater or any adjacent surface waters.
Well, it looks like there's some testing that's required so that to prove that the homeowner is meeting that, that sixty percent standard and there's even a ninety percent standard for the TTS, TSCs. So, um, um, there, there seems to be a lot of, some testing and some other things and even when you talk about some of the overflow, I know that the, the town does not, as we've discussed, if there's an over, you know, one of those delusions of rain, you don't feel like you should have to capture that. It comes down to my property.
We're, we're, this is a requirement for pre-treatment. So in a, in a normal storm event, you would be providing some pre-treatment of that stormwater, that initial stormwater amount before it went into the groundwater or into any adjacent surface waters. So there is not a requirement for, for testing. It is in the design that you are meeting the design standards required.
Rain gardens remove phosphorus?
Yes, they do.
But our septic systems do not.
They do not.
And IAs do not.
I, I would defer to the Health Department for that question.
I, I think it's pretty onerous.
It's, it's the natural vegetation. So again, this is all part of, as, as we just voted on, you know, trying to improve our, our-
Absolutely.
-water quality.
Right.
So everyone needs to, to contribute to that. So this is, is trying to bring the Town of Mashpee's bylaws into compliance with what is required by the state. We actually are, are being mandated by an order from DEP to make these changes so that we are in compliance.
Anybody else on Article Nine? All right, get your clickers and vote now. Two-thirds required. And Article Nine passes three thirty-eight to fifty-five. Article Ten, Ms. Wyman Columbo.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Ten as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto. The Select Board recommends approval of Article Ten by a vote of five, zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Ten by a vote of four, zero.
I'm not sure if the Planning Board chooses to recommend a general bylaw or not. We'll say not. Thank you, Ms. Wyman. Any discussion on Article- Yes, my dear.
Alana Doyle, Sunset Strip. I'm kind of speaking off the cuff here, so bear with me. I completely understand noise ordinance, especially when it relates to commercial. What I have a little issue with is on personal property, the noise ordinance limits. I know that when I first purchased my home, it was in a decapitated state and it took my husband and I many months of doing DIY when we have time after work here and there and sometimes using quote power tools past eight PM. I would like to offer a motion to amend eight PM to ten PM to match the noise ordinance for other sounds as well. Think it's a little crazy that my neighbors can have a rager till ten PM making as much noise as they want, but if I got a nail gun out and fixing up the side of my house, that, that wouldn't be okay.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor to amend. If you could be more specific-
Yes.
In, in section C and/or D.
Section D, so I move to change eight PM to ten PM to match the noise ordinance already in place for other noises.
But leaving section C intact?
Yes.
Is there a second? Any discussion on the proposed amendment? Hearing none, we'll vote on the amendment. We can do this by way of majority. And let's try a voice vote. All those in favor of the proposed amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Let's try it one more time. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
Okay, we're going to use the clickers.
Thank you.
So give us a moment to get the questions set up. And then once we've disposed of the amendment one way or the other, we'll go back to the main article or the amended article, as the case may be. All right, clickers are ready to amend Article Ten. Requires a majority. If you are, well, you'll figure it out. Vote now. So we have a stalemate. All right, back to the main motion and any discussion.
Hi, Donna Corey, I love Michelle Lane. Full disclosure, I'm a bartender, so I propose to keep it at eight AM rather than the seven o'clock. This is not only for, you know, restaurant workers, and I feel bad for the landscapers, but you know, in, in Falmouth, they were trying to ban gas blowers. And I personally don't want to vote for everyone else in the town, for our nurses, for our, for our doctors, for our firefighters, for our police officers that enjoy the extra hour. All the other towns on the Cape are at seven AM. We have the luxury of keeping it at eight AM and I personally want to keep it at eight AM. Thank you.
I did not hear a motion, so are we ready to vote on Article Ten? Get your clickers and vote now.
No, I got a, whoa. Michael Perkins, ninety-four Palmer Road. My question has to do with the personal section here. Does this meant to include, I can't snowblow my driveway before seven AM or after eight PM in the winter?
Any answer to that question?
Zachary Seaberry, the health agent for the town. This is for all mechanical devices, but realistically, if you're in, if you're friendly with your neighbors, I don't think they'll complain about you blowing, snowblowing your driveway because of a snowstorm, but yes, that would fall into the category. This is to give us a, something to have if neighbors are complaining about construction going on too early, waking them up or too late, keeping them from going down to bed. So yes, it would cover the snow blowers, but if you talk with your neighbors about it and they don't complain, then I don't have to follow through the regulation on them.
If I understand, the answer was yes. Yes, sir.
So point of order. Are, are we moving to vote on the, the item as amended?
We're talking about Article Ten?
Yes.
There has been no amendment approved.
I thought the no-
Microphone.
All, all right, never mind, never mind.
All right, any further discussion on Article Ten? Vote now. Article Ten was approved by a vote of two hundred twelve to one hundred ten. Article Eleven, Mister Whedon.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Eleven as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto. The Select Board recommends approval of Article Eleven by a vote of five, zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eleven by a vote of four, zero.
Any discussion on Article Eleven? Seeing none, vote now. Article Eleven passes two eighty-nine to forty-six. Article Twelve, Mister Cotton.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. I, I move the town vote to approve Article Twelve as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto. Select Board recommends approval of Article Twelve by a vote of five to zero.
Yes.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twelve by a vote of four, zero.
Any discussion on Article Twelve? This requires a two-thirds vote, seeing no discussion, vote now. Article Twelve passes three hundred to thirty-one. Article Thirteen, Ms. Wilson.
I move the, thank you, Mister Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto. The Select Board recommends approval of Article Thirteen by a vote of five, zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Thirteen by a vote of four, zero.
Any discussion on Article Thirteen? Seeing or hearing none, let's move along and vote now. Two-thirds. Article Thirteen passes by a vote of two ninety-seven to forty-two. The last article, number fourteen, is a petition article and I'm looking for a Mister Green.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. I move the town-
If you could give your full name and address.
Sorry, Joe Green, twenty-three Godfrey Road.
Thank you.
I move the town vote to approve Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Select Board.
The Select Board took no position on Article Fourteen.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. The Finance Committee makes no recommendation on Article Fourteen by a vote of four, zero.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Al Rocco, fifteen Godfrey Road, a second.
Okay, we have two seconds, but thank you, sir. Any further discussion or any discussion on Article Fourteen?
The only thing I would like to add is, is both Godfrey and Barbary Circle Roads with nineteen homes collectively on those roads, we've previously petitioned the town to, to convert those roads from private to public use. The town's done a study, come up with the cost and, and the cost will be borne by the homeowners in terms of a betterment assessment on each of the nineteen homeowners on those two roads. And we request your approval of this article. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion opportunities, let's vote now. The vote is two thirty-four to seventy. That article does require two-thirds majority, which was achieved with that vote. So that's the end of Article Fourteen and I would welcome a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favors just shout out aye.
Aye.
You've all been very well behaved and I congratulate you on an exemplary town meeting. Thank you.